This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenley Town Council, and we are calling this meeting to order. Today is April 1st and it's currently 8:03 a.m. For all call purposes, all council members are in attendance, except for Mr. Whitehead and Ms. Wakefield, who are both absent with notification, and Ms. George is joining us remotely. At this time, we'll open up for public comment. Ms. Gloria, did anything get submitted?
We did not receive any public comment prior to the meeting.
Thank you. Anyone who would like to make any public comment, please step up to the podium and state your name and address. With this being a special meeting, we just ask that any comments be related to items on tonight's, this morning's agenda. Last call for public comment, seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Ms. Gloria, would you like to start, please?
I will. Thank you very much, everyone, for coming. So this is the budget presentation for the town's operating budget side. At 10 o'clock, the Board of Education will begin their presentation around the Board of Education's budget proposals. So I just, we'll be starting and I'll try and direct you through the budget book as we go along, but the intent is really to try and get through page by page. If you have any questions as we go through, please ask them as we go along. In the development of this budget, on the town side, I've worked very closely with all the department heads, and they respectively have worked with their staff as well in the creation of the budget. And I will say that I want to first and foremost thank all of the staff in the way in which they approach their budget. The staff is very conscious of taxpayer funding and very conscious of how it is spent. And so they are very diligent in trying to find innovative ways to be cost-effective on things and to mitigate inflationary costs and things like that. So I do appreciate all of their hard work and really thinking outside the box in trying to come up with different ways of handling things. But they did a really great job. And what you have before you for the town side is largely, the increases are related to inflationary impacts. There's not really any significant additions or proposals to new services outside of the change or the continued change with the law enforcement in that I am proposing the addition of two additional constables, but the reduction of one resident state trooper, which completely offsets the cost of the two constables. So...
Resident trooper?
It is, one resident state trooper, yes. And the only, the only factor that's been not fully determined, but has not been, I shouldn't say hasn't been fully determined, we're allowed to go down to one resident state trooper. The state can at some point determine that the town needs to have, Patty George can't hear anything. Jen, do you want to, do you want Patty's number? Hang on one minute, I just want to get Patty the...
Mm-hmm.
Those are her two numbers. Do you want to picture that and then see if you can get ahold of her? Okay. Sorry about that. So the state can at some point, the state PD can at some point decide that the town, instead of just having a resident state trooper assigned, that we are required to have a resident state trooper sergeant, which is a higher cost threshold, but it'll depend on how much work and demand is placed on the resident state trooper position from this office. I will say that we have very experienced staff, and so if anything, we tend to take work off of the resident state trooper sergeant at the barracks because our guys are very astute in knowing how to develop a police report and caseloads and case flow and all of that. So that's been, so as of right now, I have had the conversation with the new lieutenant that's at the, at Troop D, Lieutenant Cody, and we are proceeding with retaining one resident state trooper. So on page A3 is a, just an overall summary chart of the numbers. I don't want to dive too far deep into this at this point because we'll go through all of these categories in far more detail, but overall, the general government side of the budget, after offsetting revenues associated with general government side, the increase or proposed increase to the mill rate is .5, is .56. And then on the education side, after offsetting the proposed education budget with the education revenues, the mill rate impact, proposed mill rate impact is 1.39, which is accumulating to the proposed increase of 1.95 mils. I did include in the budget, two utilizations of fund balance. One is the same fund balance utilization that we did last year for road renewal. I kept the dedication to road renewal the same, level funded at $2.5 million, which is $250,000 within the operating budget and the remaining $2,250,000 out of fund balance. The other utilization of fund balance that I have, that I have requested use of is $500,000 for the replacement of the library roof. The library roof is in a state, it has had some active leaks that we've been trying to repair, but it is definitely at its end of its useful life, and those repairs are not going to last for any significant period of time. So we need to get that one replaced. So I'm requesting the activation of fund balance for that purpose. I did include at page A8, the summary of the unrestricted fund balance comparison, so you could have an understanding of where our fund balance levels have been at. And so we are still reflecting an estimated fund balance number for FY '21, '22 for that sets for fiscal year ended June 30th of 2022. The audit has not yet been completed. We are still awaiting for the auditors to come out. I know that the Board of Education's business manager and the town staff has been working towards that reconciliation over the last several weeks, and hopefully the auditors will be able to come out in the next couple of weeks. So we would likely not really be seeing what those final numbers are until May, but I think that based on where we're at, these are, it's a, we don't anticipate any significant changes to that number. We also have populated an estimated number for this current fiscal year, and I will say that when we estimate that number, we do so very conservatively. We recognize that we are still within an active operating budget and expenditures may come up between now and the end of the year. So we are conservative on what we, what we determine would be potential turnbacks, so that way we're not overestimating how much your fund balance is going to be at the end of the current fiscal year. So this is very conservative. So we expect that we will complete the fiscal year, fully expending the $2,450,000 out of fund balance that was dedicated through the budget process with a 24.1% fund balance, which is still a very healthy fund balance. So by dedicating or appropriating the $2,750,000 that's proposed in this current budget, it leaves a fund balance percentage of 19.3%, which is still, which is still a good fund balance. It is within our fund balance guidance range and would be still well-received by our credit rating agencies. Any questions on that fund balance?
What is that guidance range, just to refresh our memories, for the fund balance?
Yeah, so we, our fund balance range is between 15 and 20%. We really, and we have, you know, if we drop, we are allowed to drop below 15, we are allowed to go down, I believe, as low as 12 before we have to start taking proactive steps to start replenishing those funds. But 15 to 20 is really our range, and being at the 19, we're still at the upper end of that range, so we're in, we're in good shape.
And does our fund balance include monies, the ARPA money we had received?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, that's a separate fund.
That was my question as well.
Hi Patty, is that you joining us now? No, she's not muted. Okay, she's still working on it. So this is just the general funds unrestricted fund balance. So any funds that we would receive that have restriction, like ARPA funds, are not included in this because this is the unrestricted, which means there are no guideposts around it. The town council has full authorization over that. Okay? The next page that I put in here is new, A9, and really, this was to give, you know, one thing that I hear on a regular basis is, what does a mill rate even mean to me? Right? Like what does 1.95 mils even mean? I, you know, it's hard to understand what that means from a tax perspective. What is my tax bill actually going to be? So these are examples, and I, and I just want to stress that these are examples. They're, everybody's property value is different and unique, and so this may not be representative of anybody's individual properties, but you have a general understanding of what your property value might be, so you can kind of understand where it might be. If you, if an individual wants to look up what is the exact impact to my property, I have provided two links in the document. One is to our GIS, the property record cards. That will show you what is actually the assessed value of your property. So if you're not sure of what your, what your property is, what your, what your assessed value is, I encourage you to look it up, especially since, you know, there's been a lot of market activity over the last several years. Just because you bought a house in the last couple of years does not mean that that house, the price that you purchased it at may not be what's reflected on the property card. We do our revaluation every five years, right? And so your value that's on the property card may be substantially less because we're going off of 2018 values, not current values, right? So you really should look at what that is. And I also added there the link to the tax calculator, so you can then take your assessed value, you can plug it in, and you can see what is the actual tax impact to the individual taxpayer.
Just a quick note to add that we are going through the reval this year, so whatever someone's taxes are right now, that could be changing going forward based on...
Yeah, so everybody's been getting data mailers in the mail to confirm what their information, so by statute, we're required to do a revaluation every five years. That puts our revaluation at October 1st of 2023. So that will be completed for October 1st of 2023, which will impact your grand list, your tax payment, if you will, for the July 1st of 2024, right? So it goes out another, a whole nother year. I think we're ending our WebEx meeting and trying to reboot it. We're trying to still get Patty on. Thank you, Jen, for trying to get that worked out.
Now, I do have one question. So the packets that we have before us today, is that available on the town's website right now?
It is. Available on the website. I also have packets at the library, town clerk's office, town manager's office.
I just wanted to ask in case anybody's watching at home and didn't know where to get this information.
Yep. They are, they are online. So again, this is just to better understand what would that potential annual tax dollar increase be? And I also did include the monthly amount, only because there are, especially now with the new banking regulations, if anybody's recently purchased a home, while in the past you would have not, you would have been able to opt out of an escrow, you're not as likely to opt out of an escrow now. And so many people are wondering, how is it going to impact my monthly mortgage payment? Because your escrows are, your taxes are rolled up into that mortgage payment. So what does that actually mean for me on a monthly basis? So I included a monthly breakdown of that as well, just for that purpose. And again, this is based, the numbers that you see here before you are based on the full budget, should it be passed in the, in the, as it's presented to you right now. So the B pages are really summary pages. I'm not really going to go into them a whole lot, but they are high-level summary pages. I'm going to skip to the revenue pages, the green pages, if anybody, if everybody can, and we'll start getting through the meat and potatoes, if you will, of the budget. So on the revenue pages, the first page that you're looking at, the very first piece of this that I want to draw your attention to is the Lake Road Generating Agreement. So that one, we, as you are aware, we're still within negotiations with the pilot, the pilot, the payment in lieu of tax agreement that we had with Lake Road Generating expired in the previous fiscal year. We are in negotiations to look at potentially doing another long-term agreement. However, we've not concluded that, or come to an agreement on that at this point. So we did have an independent appraisal done of the property, and we have shown on the grand list are the independent appraisal value. That has resulted in the $7 million in tax revenue. In prior years, we were, under the pilot, we were seeing about $3 million in revenue that has been utilized in the budget to offset taxes. You will note, and I am going to have you flip...
I heard her for one second.
Hi Patty, are you there?
Can you do Zoom?
I heard Patty. Patty, are you there?
It's WebEx.
Now we can hear her, but she still can't hear us. All right. So I am going to have you flip back to the blue page, B2, for one moment. So a point to make is that we are still in negotiations with this, and also the taxpayer, Lake Road Generating has appealed that, that grand list assessment. So they are going to be going through the court process on that. As, in order to meet or, in an effort to address some of the council's concerns around funding capital projects, what I have done here is reflected only a slight increase in utilization of revenue for the budget, and the remaining balance being just under $4 million on the end of the B pages, under capital improvements, there's a number of That is the funding from Lake Road Generating that is getting appropriated to capital improvements. So instead of supplanting the entire $7 million to off, into the budget, which would be a substantial challenge to have an increase in, you know, 10 years, when that revenue goes away, you would have a substantial increase to your tax base for that, for that loss of revenue. Moving that, or funding capital projects, you would be able to get capital projects completed without having to go into a borrowing status, which without, so you wouldn't be incurring borrowing costs, you won't be incurring interest costs, and the town will then have a sustainable rev, local revenue source to use as matching funds that currently we have to, we have to usually borrow for, or raise mill rate in order to be able to make those capital projects happen. We'll still go after all those grants, but most of the grants, there's very, very few and far between 100% grants. They're typically an 80/20, many of them are 50/50, and when you start talking about millions of dollars, that number can climb pretty quickly for a local match, so this would give an opportunity for that. It would also provide an opportunity for the council. Over the past two years, the council has utilized over $2 million for road renewal, for capital projects. You're not going to be able to continue to use fund balance in that method on an annual basis. This would be able to transition to utilizing those resources as opposed to fund balance because you're going to have to come off of that utilization of fund balance.
So I just want to make sure I understand, we don't see the other $3 million that is in the $7 million here, and it would be...
It's revenue.
In the fund balance at some point?
Yeah, so it's just...
Just not reflected here?
So it is, it's, it's, it's not broken out separately.
Okay.
It's all, it's just considered revenue, and that revenue goes to overall decrease the mill rate.
Okay.
It just, it's considered as general fund revenue, so it's 3.1 million.
It's not reflected on the blue page.
Correct. The blue page is only expenditures.
Okay.
That's only expenditures that you're seeing right there.
Yeah, okay.
Now, I do have one question. So the projected fund balance for the 23-24 fiscal year that put us at the, I believe it was 19.3%, is that reflective?
So that does not include Lake Road Generating.
Okay, all right.
We did not incorporate anything with regards to that.
Okay, thank you.
With respect to the Lake Road, no. Because they're going to the courts. Do they have, what do they have? With respect to Lake Road Generating and their, in the courts contesting the assessment and all of that, what do they have to pay? Is there a minimum that they have to pay, or is there...
So they, they are still required to pay the full, the full tax bill, or if they don't, they end up having interest accrues until the tax appeal court determines what the final number is, and then they would only have to pay outstanding interest based on that new amount. That being said, if they do pay the full amount, we would likely need to put, you know, our auditors would recommend that we put a reserve around a certain percentage of that because as the tax appeal proceeds, it's, you know, it's, it can, it could be, could be that the tax that we settle somewhere in between, and so the town would then have to refund. So we would actually put a reserve around a certain percentage of that and set it aside in the case, until the tax appeal is settled, and then we would know exactly how much would have to be refunded, but we wouldn't be expending those funds and then having to figure out how to recoup them. They would be on a set aside and handling any of that settlement as we proceed forward.
Now, if we did have to ref, if they did pay the full amount, we did have to refund it, would we be...
Hi Mary! Hi Patty!
Oh, yes, we got it. Okay, thanks Jen.
All right, bye.
Would the town be responsible to pay interest on that refund to Lake Road Generating at that point?
To my knowledge, no.
Yeah, but, but what can we react, in reality, what can we expect them to be paying? I mean, is there a minimum, you know, because it's in tax appeal, that's a nightmare.
Yep. So I think that the real, the town should realistically expect them to pay the full That is what the corporations do when they file tax appeal, because they don't want to, they don't want to have the exposure of having accumulated interest and potential liens to be filed against a property, even during a tax appeal. They will pay the full amount. It's a matter of whether or not the town utilizes all of those resources or puts reserves around them for a period of time as we go through that process.
I've got to think about that. I can't, I can't. There's a lot with that.
Yeah, I think that, I'm confused too. So you see it in general fund, and then you see half of it in expenditures. So you were talking about the matching fund. Is it just going to sit the imaginary, not yet obtained money in...
Yeah, the $4 million, you'll see when we get into the capital improvement plans, some of it has been allocated to capital projects, but those capital projects are not ones that we will be able to necessarily kick off on July 1. They still have to go through planning stages, and we have a lot of heavy lift capital projects that are underway right now. We only have so, you know...
So if it didn't come through, those would just be put on the back burner?
We would, we would pace them out as, and prioritize them as, as we're comfortable with what resources we have. Very similar to how we treat some of our state grant funding, like town aid roads, right? Town aid road funds, we know, the state has already told us how much money we're getting in town aid road funds. Sometimes we don't see it until next June, right? So we don't spend that money until it's in the bank, because what we have had happen with the state is, they'll tell us now you're getting X amount in town aid road, and then in January, they cut it in half. So when we get it in June, it's half of what they originally said. So we typically will wait and delay the expenditure on that, so that way we know that we have the right amount of money that we're spending. Any other questions on that one?
But see, that, that's an area where I keep getting comments from different people that, yeah, now it's in the courts. Why can't we force them? We, all the rest of us pay because we don't want to go to court, but they have enough money to go to court.
So they're not the only ones that go to court, though. We have a lot, we have a lot of our corporations, not a lot, we have, we have a handful of our corporations that, that go through the tax appeal process on a fairly regular basis, especially when we get through a revaluation timeframe. It's, you know, kind of almost standard practice for some of them, that that's, that's just the process that they go through. And anyone has the, everyone has the right to appeal their, their assessments.
Well, that's what I try to tell them.
Everyone has that.
You want to appeal, and you want to do what these people can do, but you don't have the funds to do it, so you stick with it. That's just where...
It's a process.
Well, that's also why we have a Board of Assessment and Appeals, too.
Correct.
That people can come before them, no problem, and that's free, as far as I know, to come before.
Yes, but generally, they would want to have some proof. So if you're going before them and you're saying that your assess, your residential real estate assessment is incorrect, they would want to see an appraisal or something. So if you've recently had it appraised, what is that appraisal and how is it refuted?
Right, I'm talking about legal expenses, though.
Yes, correct.
But in, in general, with this there, just more of a comment than anything, I mean, it makes sense there that, right now, we, the, the pilot programs ended, so here's your tax bill, but we're going to wisely put it in reserves, just in case things happen with court, like you said, and that way, if we don't spend that money, then all of a sudden be on the hook to repay any of that money. I think that's the smarter way of handling it all.
I did reasonably activate about a little over $100,000 in an increase in the revenue to try and help offset some, you know, some little bit of mill rate, but again, it's trying to be conservative on that, just as this process continues to go through.
Do you have any timeframe of how long it'll be in?
No.
No timeframe at all?
None. It could be months, it could be years. Solar tax appeals, that happened last revaluation in 2018. Some of them are just settling now for perspective. So it can take some time, or it can be a lot shorter. And again, we are, so we are not just waiting for tax appeal either, we are continuing to negotiate. So we may come to a negotiated settlement in that process as well. But right now, we are basing our value based on the independent appraisal that we had completed, and that's what's reflected here. The other items on this page, the licensing and permitting is essentially just a little bit of an increase. We have seen some increase in building permit activity, so we're just conservatively watching that. This year, you're seeing a big number for building permits, that was Frito-Lay. We don't expect that to be repeated for next year. And then the next group, fines and fees, are relatively flat, just a minor decrease in that, and that is really around the library fines and fees, but overall, that library fines and fees, while we went fine-free, we are no longer finding, we still have a substantial amount of fees that we do still collect at the library, and that's the revenue from that. The next grouping, use of money, interest income. We did recognize an increase in interest income. We've had some recent maturities of CDs that we were able to roll to higher interest rates, and we are continuing... and we are continuing to look at that to see if we can activate some higher interest rate earnings there, but we're comfortable at the 95. The communication tower lease, this is what we have for leases between the highway garage and here at the town hall. And if you recall, one of, which one was it? Was it AT&amp;T?
It was the Sprint.
Sprint. AT&amp;T got back on the pole, they're part of Sprint, they took their Sprint stuff off the pole, right? Or T-Mobile, right? It was T-Mobile came back on the pole, Sprint went off the pole. So it's just because cell networks combine and so they've taken off. So that's what our cellular, our leases are, next page.
What about the, I heard things about the Davis property, the gravel operation that ?
That's a separate fund. That's in the, that's further into one of the separate funds. We receive gravel, we receive revenue from there, but it goes into a dedicated fund for the final restoration of that property.
Okay.
So we don't utilize that for general fund. Next page is really, the first part of it is state grants, so these are the revenues that are, we receive directly from the governor's budget and what the expected revenue is for each of those pieces. One line item that I want to just highlight for you, the municipal grant and aid, no, is it municipal stabilization? That's the revenue sharing, right? Municipal stabilization, sorry, municipal stabilization, that grant, when we start talking about spending cap, so in my budget message, I talked about spending cap back in 2018, 19, the legislation passed, legislation that puts a cap on municipal spending at two and a half percent annually, right? And if we go above that threshold, if our expenditures, if we increase it more than two and a half percent from the prior year based on a calculation, we run the risk of losing 50 cents for every dollar that we go over that spending cap, 50 cents of this municipal stabilization grant would be reduced out and we would no longer be eligible for it. So we've done that calculation, the budget that you have presented before you. The, the second caveat they put to it was that it's two and a half percent or current rate of inflation. Thankfully, this year, they're using current rate of inflation because two and a half percent would be really bad. They're using 6.18 percent, right? That's their, that's their threshold for spending cap calculation. We are at 6.111, right? So we are at 6.11% as presented to you right now on the spending cap. So we are not, what's presented to you right now is in compliance with that, so we don't have any, we're not risking the loss of any of that revenue. But I just wanted to highlight that for you so that when you talk about municipal spending cap, that's the revenue that's tied to that municipal spending cap. There is current legislation out there that they want to basically pool all of these state grants and the other state grant where it says municipal grant and aid, pool it all into one big category. That means that municipal, that municipal spending cap now impacts a whole lot more money than just that one piece, right? So that's just something, you know, to keep in the back of your head, but right now, it's that $268,000.
Now, I've got one question. You were talking about pooling all of it together, would that include the Pequot Mohegan Fund or would that be separate?
No, that's still separate because I still are keeping the requirements around that.
Okay.
And so if you look at the state's appropriation of funding to municipalities and you look at a town by town breakdown, the Pequot municipal, the Pequot Mohegan Grant Fund, Killingley is listed as having an amount of $94,000 for the town. However, we are not going to be eligible to receive that because we do not comply with the requirements of that grant. So it, we don't reflect the revenue here because we know that we're not going to comply with that, but if you were to look at the state and you were to look at a town by town breakdown, you're going to see Killingley has $94,000 for that grant. They do list it, but ultimately, we end up not being qualified for it. So just, I want you to be aware of that.
One other question as far as that, I know there was a push in Hartford to increase the total amount in that fund. Have you heard anything further on that? Did that?
There's still conversation about that, however, it hasn't been, it hasn't come to fruition yet for this upcoming fiscal year. It may impact for future years, but what's currently being listed on a town by town perspective, Killingley's number was the same from the previous year of $94,000.
Okay, thank you.
Getting back to the Mohegan, Pequot Fund grant, I mean, I can't believe we're not taking advantage of this. So last year, we didn't take advantage of it. This year, we're not taking advantage of it. You know, we're looking at $180,000. I'm sure the housing authority could use $180,000. The sewer authority could use $180,000. If the Board of Ed doesn't want it, you know, it's kind of, it's a kick in the teeth to residents of the town. And, you know, I heard comments at the Board of Ed meeting the other night, we've got to take advantage of all the grants that are available. I'll just throw that out there.
I just want to make one comment on that. If we refer back to what happened in 2019 in the municipal elections, if you look at the majority of the voters, majority of the voters, based off of how the votes went, they were in favor of the, the direction the Board of Ed has gone. And one thing that I haven't heard recently is how much would it cost the town to comply with the guidelines in order to receive that $94,000? Is it going to exceed $94,000? Could it be $200,000? So those are numbers I haven't heard in quite a while.
And I don't believe we should take advantage of all grants that are available because of, some of them leave you hostage such as the work, live, ride program. If you sign up for that, then you're under hostage of the state and taking away control from the municipality.
I just had a question. So when those grants is in there for the $94,000 or whatever, now you're saying $180-something thousand, is it just going to accumulate so at some point? Or is it just, it's not retroactive?
Yeah, it's, it's not retroactive. The state would, you know, if, if the town were to decide to make changes around that and we would then become eligible for it, it would only be what we would be eligible in the current year, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be retroactive. The next section is charges for services and these are just, you know, direct charges that, you know, charges that we collect from, you know, a variety of departments. The elderly housing sewer reimbursement, this is the amount that the housing authority pays the town for their sewer bill. That's really kind of a, in an arrears, we, they pay us, we have an allotment to pay their current sewer bill when we get further down into the budget. They pay us for the previous, it allows them to better budget, right? So this is the assistance, kind of one of those assistance levels that we do for the housing authority and it smooths out and gives them better abilities to make budget changes on their side because our budget processes don't align. So that's the revenue that we receive from the housing authority. District collections is just from the Borough of Danielson. We, we collect the Borough of Danielson's fire district taxes, that's been an ongoing relationship for quite some time and we charge them staff and, and supply costs on, based on a number of accounts. So it's all based off an MOU and a calculation.
Getting back to the elderly housing sewer reimbursement, the reason is like a one year delay, it's like when we have a, when they're doing their budget and all of a sudden we're doing all at the same time, if we have a, a super increase in the sewer rates, we can absorb it and they have a year now to come up with
They have a way to plan.
amend their budget for that. So it gives them a bit of a break and, you know, maybe we're a year behind, but we've got to help them out and they're on such a, their budget is so tight.
Yeah.
They're on a shoestring. I don't even know if it's a shoestring. So that little help that we can do and it gives them a, a year, but they're still, they're still paying, so it's not that much, but for them, it's a big amount.
Just going back for a question, so the spending cap includes the, all of it, the school budget too?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, there are components that we're allowed to remove out of the spending cap like special education, capital contributions, but all, the regular operational costs are all town and Board of Education altogether in that municipal spending cap. The next page, under other revenues, a lot of this is what you're seeing as reimbursements from other funds. Generally, we have miscellaneous, which is just that miscellaneous, we have, you know, small amounts that come in for scrap metal that is accumulated over the year as well as Karma has been over the last nine years giving a refund of premiums or a distribution of dividend to their member towns. We've been receiving that as well. This is where we recognize that revenue. The payments from the sewer operating fund, that number has decreased and that's because of debt service. So they had their initial debt service that came on the books for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. It was last year was their first one, that's the highest. We always structure our debt with level principal payment, which means it's, it decreases, the total payment decreases over time because you're not, you're paying less interest over time because you're paying more in principal. So that has gone down, that debt payment has gone down, so that's where that reduction is coming from. And then the other increase that you're seeing there is law enforcement, SRO, ASO reimbursement. So that is really from the Board of Education. So on the town side of the, of the fence, we have recognized the expenditures for the, the inclusion of the full ASO program and the existing SRO that we have designated to the Board of Education. And here's where we're recognizing the reimbursement from the Board of Education, right? Because these expenses are built into the Board of Education's budget, right? So we are washing it out on the town side to reflect that those expenditures are on the Board of Education's side. So that's the, that's the increase there is really reflecting that new ASO program. The other section, the school, these are all school-related revenues. The, I, two changes, the school capital contribution, which is really in the bracket right above, that is related to tuition payments from Brooklyn for debt service associated to the high school. That was an agreement that was reached long ago. Brooklyn and these two are tied together, the capital, school capital contribution and regular tuition are kind of tied together. Brooklyn, the school always reaches out to Brooklyn to determine how many students they foresee they will be sending to KHS in the upcoming year. They were notified by Brooklyn that the, the largest majority of their students are looking at going to Woodstock or Ellis and, and not necessarily Killingley High School. So they have committed to a much smaller number of students. So the reduction that you're seeing in school capital contribution and regular tuition is really around that. So that's a decrease of about $500,000 in revenue from that tuition relationship. You know, it's possible that that, there will be, end up, still end up being more students coming because both Woodstock and Ellis are application-based and, you know, that may shift or students may change their mind, but this is what they felt was appropriate to budget for.
I just have one question. Back to the sewer operating fund, I know it's a reduction of $260,000, but that's also reflected in expenditures, isn't it? Because we're not paying out for that debt service.
Correct, so the debt service, you'll see the reduction in the debt service on that side and also the sewer user rates have a reduction, they have a, the impact from that Any other questions on this? Okay. And then you're recognizing here, I'm showing the use of the fund balance, the 2.7 million is use of fund balance and revenues. And that wraps out revenues. Any other questions?
Maybe one other comment I, I think I'd like to make, if we want to spend some money and we want to take the use of fund balance, now's the time that we have to do it. If there's anything coming up, to have a supplemental appropriation mid-year, we don't want to do that. And, yeah, it's doing the same thing, but if we do it during the budget process, it's easy to do and the rating agencies don't look bad on us or whatnot, so that's, this is the time to do it and hopefully we don't have any issues.
Yeah, so we
We've been pretty good in the last few years, but I was through a couple and it was, we really took a beating on it when we did it, so.
Yeah, so the, with regards to that, we are getting ready to prepare for a rating agency call because we are going to be issuing debt. That's an impact within this budget is the debt issuance. This is the, as we had discussed when we first, when the towns approved the capital projects, we were coming into, the 2024 year was going to be the first year of having to do repayment for debt issuance, so we are in the process of getting ready to go out to borrowing for seven million for debt issuance on the two projects. Capital, the credit rating agencies view the utilization in your budgetary document as a planned utilization. When they see you do it in the middle of the year as a supplemental appropriation, they see it as very reactionary and they question why you didn't, but why didn't you plan for that? So this is viewed as good planning. You do it in the middle of the year, they get concerned that you're not really paying attention during your budget process. So to your point, it, it does make an impact, but I don't foresee that we'll have any challenge or any issue with the credit rating agency. We've already reviewed this with our, with our consultants that assist us through that process and they've been very favorable. Any other questions before we move over into expenditures? And now we're going to go into the D pages. I will say, not, there's not a huge amount of changes in many of the D pages, so.
I think you just connected.
Hey, I don't know. I don't know. I've only ever done that once and I don't want to repeat the circumstances of that day, so that was, that was a challenging day, so. Town council, largely the biggest, the biggest change in this is just reflecting advertising, where we really feel advertising is going on a, on a regular basis. We really try and do a lot of, you know, Facebook pushes and stuff like that as opposed to print media. And so we find that that tends to be more community friendly in that direction, so that's just reflecting the savings there. Any questions on town council's budget? Town manager's budget. In the previous year, current year, I had budgeted for a full-time grant writer position. Unfortunately, we really haven't been able to find the right mix for that and really what I decided to do was restructure that and share. We have a full-time position that we share really between three offices, my office, the finance office and the highway department office, it's worked out well for coverage and so we restructured accordingly. And so that's provided some savings here and some savings in the highway department. It does, and it's helped offset some of the other market pressures that we've had for wages in other, in other departments. So that's really the change here. I did decrease professional development simply because there's a lot now that's done online for free and so we take advantage of those. Karma has a really extensive online program for free and so we really try and take advantage of those and I'm, you know, not really looking at doing any, a lot of the national ones you can do remotely as well. There are times when it's good to go to them physically because sometimes it's really hard to participate when you're still in your office because everybody still comes in your office and you don't get as much in to that training as you need to, but I think for right now, it works fine where we're at, so I was able to provide some savings there. Any other questions on that one? Legal services, I'm leaving that one flat. I really think that now that we're coming to the conclusion of the Davco trial, we will see some relief, but you never know what's going to crop up next. So I'm leaving that one alone, but we have been within, within budget on our legal fees for the past couple of years, so going to leave that one alone.
Does, does Lake Road generating come into that?
That one is actually a reserve that we do. We've been doing a, we've been putting money into a reserve for that negotiation, which you're actually going to see an increased request in that just because we are still actively trying to negotiate that, so. Town clerk, contractual wage increases based on the union contract and then just some decreases related to watching historical trend and seeing what the current market looks like for their transactions. We felt that there was some savings to achieve there. We felt that there was some savings to achieve there. Any questions on town clerk? We'll go to finance.
So you're saying all of 4.6% increase in clerical? What is that, Mary?
Yeah, so that is the, that is because of the union wage increases. So we've had, we also had some employee shift in that department. So we had one employee leave. We had another employee come in that was at a slighter, slightly higher pay scale. And so, and then with the contractual wage increases. So that's what your differences are for the current year.
Does early voting have any, or what bearing that might have on the town clerk? I mean, that's in-
Yeah, so the town clerk does handle the absentee balloting process. And we have not incorporated any expenditures around early voting because the state, Secretary of State has been very loudly advocating and has in the past had the state provide grant funds to the towns to offset direct costs associated with expanded hours or expanded, you know, if we needed to hire additional people in order to be able to process higher volumes, they've been able to do that. We actually still have residual funds from the last election grant process that we had for absentee balloting, which we're looking to utilize for elections in the upcoming year as well. So we anticipate that whatever comes through legislation on early voting, because we do expect something around early voting for new language. We also anticipate that there will be grant funds associated with that by the state. Any other questions on town clerk? We'll go to the finance department. Finance department, this again is that reconfiguration that I spoke about before between, of that position between the three offices. And she does, that position does spend the majority, the, a larger percentage of time in the finance department. And so the, we tried to adjust all of those. So we're properly reflecting the time that she has shared between those. You're going to see a savings in the highway department budget that helps to offset this. And there is also some market adjustment here as well with, with positions that have been historically substantially below market. And we're starting to really feel some market pressure in order to retain employees. And that is going, that is a challenge that we have. We could meet median market, and I say median, the middle. I'm not talking about getting to the high. I'm talking about get to the middle. So we are attractive and we can retain our qualified, highly-trained staff versus them leaving and us having to fill that position with somebody who's not nearly as knowledgeable, but we have to pay the higher threshold too anyway because that's what the market demands now. And you're going to see that in, I think, one of our next budgets that we get to assessor. You're going to see that has occurred within our assessor's department as well. The wage market, as employees have transitioned, has become quite the challenge for us to be able to be marketable and retain our qualified staff. So there has been strategies that I've had to implement here in order to be able to do that and trying to find efficiencies in other areas to help offset that cost.
So just so I understand, when I see an 11% increase and a 9.4% increase, some of that is a raised increase, some of it is that person might be taking on more work?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a combination. It's not just one specific, right? It's a combination. We go to the next one. And this is the assessor's department. And so this is the one that in the wages department looks really weird, right? Because you see 100% negative and then 33% increase. So this one, we did have a, a long-term staff employee that left. When we went to go fill that position, the market range was substantially different. And in order to be able to attract in a qualified person and also look to set the town for succession planning, you know, succession planning for our, you know, department head-level position, we needed to make an investment and I felt it was important to do so. With that, we also need to address an existing staff member as well. So those are the changes largely within this department. Again, I tried to help minimize or soften this impact by making the decision around that grant writer position. Jill St. Clair has actually picked up a lot of the grant writing functions, if you will. She, you know, she sees them as a challenge. She goes after those grants. But she's worked very well with a lot of staff in trying to help get through some of those. But we're, you know, all trying to team in together to figure out how we can best leverage our resources. And then really no other major increases through this one. The knowledge and reference is just the pricing guides for the motor vehicles. They have to purchase all new, they have to get all new ones. The legislation, it does look like they're looking at delaying the implementation of the new legislation that would move them to MSRP and then depreciation largely because the vendors that program our softwares, there's three vendors, they don't have the ability to get that rolled out in enough time for that to work. So they are probably looking at a one-year delay, but they do need to purchase those and the manuals have gone up. Any other questions on assessors? We'll move to revenue. Revenue, you're not seeing any increase or change in salary. The revenue department is in a bit of a a morph right now. It's morphing right now. So we've had two long-term employees, our revenue collector and now our, and our assistant revenue collector that are retiring. They've been with the town for 40 years. So Linda Newcombe, our assistant revenue collector, her last day was yesterday. And she has begun her, her journey in through retirement. So congratulations to Linda. Pat will be joining her in retirement here at the end of this month. So we are in the process of advertising for a revenue collector. With that, now, with the knowledge and knowing their timeframe, we had a clerk position open up back in December. I opted to, instead of hiring in just a revenue clerk, I looked to bring in an assistant revenue collector, go for a higher threshold individual in the hope that these two seasoned individuals could download as much possible information in three months' time. And God love her, April's done an amazing job of just absorbing all of this information, but she comes with great qualifications as an assistant revenue collector as well, right? She's been a revenue collector now for a good seven years or more, seven or eight years or more. So she's been a revenue collector for a good period of time. So she has been acting as that assistant revenue collector. So I did not reflect any wage increases in here whatsoever because we are really in a big shift at the moment. And it's really hard to determine where everything is going to necessarily settle out. I really feel that what we have here planned will be sufficient in the upcoming year. But that's really where we're at. We're in this big shift in morph right now for that department, given that they haven't had those two key positions change in 40 years. You know, that's, that's substantial. So, but the other, and the, and the rest of them, the other changes in this department, pluses and minuses, but really it's around historical market trends or what we know are going to be contractual increases, like around the printing, the cost for printing, the annual tax bills are just going up. And that's what we've gotten from our vendor.
I've got one question. On the technical line, looking at this year, you had approved, the approved budget was 50,840 and then we came in 13,000 higher. What was the reasoning why we came in so much higher and why is that not projected to carry forward?
Because, so that's a good question. The reason why for this year is because instead of hiring the revenue clerk, which would have gone into clerical, we hired an assistant revenue collector, which goes into the technical line, right? So it's just hiring that higher skill level in, into this, into that budget line. So it's just the shift within that budget line for that. Going into the neck, going forward, we would only have one assistant revenue collector. We don't need to have two. We would only have one assistant revenue collector. So that would drop back down to the more normal range. With a revenue collector, an assistant revenue collector, the revenue clerk, which that line now gets filled at its full capacity. And then the, we have a, we would have a part-time accounts manager. Make sense? Okay. Yeah, a lot of shifting and moving in that department. The next one is registrars. And polling, not, not a significant, any significant changes on this one. The registrars had requested some increases to stipends for election and poll workers, which is what you're seeing in the, in the department column of the 41,000. I brought it back down to 35 because we do have the additional funds still remaining from that absentee ballot, absentee ballot grant. So we can utilize those to help offset that. So we didn't need to build that within this budget. So that was the, the change there. But overall, everything else is basically historical trend. Any questions on this one? Next one is nine town commissions and service agencies. Really not a lot of changes on this one. Your two decreases, one housing authority. That again is based solely on our calculation for sewer. So that is what we determined is what their sewer bill is going to be for the upcoming year and that's what we budget for that expenditure. It is less than what it was last year. Again, they had a lower debt service number. We've also transitioned from contract operator to employee base, right? So there's some shifts there. The la, the other one that has a significant dec, or a decrease is permanent building commission and that is largely because they know law, so previously they were paying a recording secretary. The staff liaison, Mary Brom, is performing those recording secretary duties and so she doesn't receive any additional payment for that. None of our staff liaisons, when we, when we perform as recording secretaries, receive any additional payment for that. So that's a savings to the commission. Planning and development. Again, this department in the personnel line has had some shifts and moves. We've had some employees that have left and we've had some employees that have come in at different, at different wage rates. And then also a couple of more minor adjustments related to market impact in order to retain those qualified staff that we would otherwise pay significantly more in the market on. So that's the impact to there. Any questions? Going to 11. Information technology, this is all things IT. Everything IT, all of our software, all of our backend networking support. So really the increases here is largely Microsoft Office jacked up their renewal costs pretty substantially this upcoming year. And we're stuck with it. I don't know that there's any way to get around Microsoft Office. If anybody has an alternative to Microsoft Office, I'm listening, but boy, I haven't found one yet. The other one is Novus, for the first time in about four years, has actually brought forward an increase and it's about a 3%. So that's reflected here as well. But the largest increase there is really Microsoft Office.
Now, I know we were looking at implementing, having the ledger online available.
That's in here.
That is.
And we are working on it. I promise you that we are working on it. We have the, we have the vendor identified. Unfortunately, the timing of when it became identified, it is right in the middle of budget and now audit at the same time. And finance only has so many, so much time in a day. And I have not prioritized that one. I want audit done first.
Understandable.
That's my priority. She knows it.
But the cost of that is-
The cost is reflected in here and we're maintaining that going forward. Our intention is that hopefully over the summertime, we can potentially get that rolled out. It's about a three-month implementation timeframe with the vendor. So probably late summer, maybe early fall, we'll be able to get it out on a public-facing.
And there are, yeah, there are some details, there are some details too that we might be able to get up quicker related to like our accounts payable, you know, when we pay bills and those types of things, vendor information, payments to vendors. We might be able to get that up sooner before the whole suite. So that's another option we're going to look into if possible, so.
As we can release things, we will, but she hasn't kicked me yet, so.
Thank you.
All right, go, moving on. Town hall building. Town hall building, you're seeing a lot of decreases here because we're recognizing that we will likely have, we will have savings in this building because with the law enforcement moving, which we will be in the next month closing, we're getting ready to, we're preparing our closing documents for 26 Soap Street right now. The seller has been able to come to a resolution, or at least around that transaction. And we have a path forward on that. So we are going to be closing on that building here shortly, which means this building will now be able to go almost into sleep mode over the weekends, which, because we will no longer have law enforcement in here for such long periods of time, meaning, so we're going to have some savings here. We've adjusted for those savings. The other, the due to CNR, last year we had done a special, we had done an increased ask in CNR because of a vehicle replacement that needed to be done and we needed additional funding in order to make that vehicle replacement happen because of market rate changes. We clearly have done that. We don't need to ask for that additional any longer. So we've dropped that, that out. Any other, any questions?
No, I, as far as the CNR, are we increasing the amount of that? Because the cost of vehicles is not going down anytime soon.
Correct. So are we increasing it? No, we are not increasing it. But what we are doing is a few different things. Number one, we're looking at vehicles life to determine, you know, and typically we've done this over, over the years as well. You know, a vehicle, just because we have it on there for a 10-year life expectancy, doesn't mean that we replace it at year 10. I always evaluate the vehicle, which means I sit down with our highway director and determine what is the performance of that vehicle? How many miles are on that vehicle? How is it actually performing, right? And if, what, what is the replacement cost? What is it actually going to cost to replace it? What do we actually need to replace it with, right? I ask a whole lot of questions. Matt gets really sick of me. But it's okay. And we make, we make a determination as to whether or not it gets replaced or whether or not it needs to wait a year or two, right? And so parks in the CNR this year, one of the parks vehicles, pickup trucks is a prime example. That actually was due for replacement on the CNR three years ago. It was running fine though. It wasn't really showing any substantial deficiencies. We weren't really running into any severe mechanical problems or anything like that. And even back then, market was challenging. So we've pushed it out. We will have enough in this upcoming budget year in order to be able to replace that. Some of the other steps that we've taken for some of the more higher-priced vehicles that when that, when that percentage jump happens, it's a lot more, like the dump trucks, right? You know, they've, when I started here in 2009 and 10, we were paying $145,000 for a dump truck. Now it's $245,000, right? That's pretty substantial and there's no way you can build that into a depreciation schedule and increase your CNR for that. But one thing that we've done, and the council supported this last year, is what we had residual remaining unspent of highway collective funds at the end of the year, we transferred those into the CNR fund in order to be able to make up those differences. So as the town is able to under, you know, not spend all of that, all, any, you know, not fully expend the funds at the end of the year, we would look to the town council to potentially move that into the CNR to help bridge those gaps, right? And help make up that depreciation change.
And I know one thing we had been looking into in the past was putting in a wash bay, which with a wash bay, I mean, granted, it doesn't affect the mileage of the vehicle, but it can reduce substantially the amount of corrosion and wear and tear we're seeing underneath the vehicle.
Yes.
So that's something I, I think we should still continue to look into and doing.
I completely agree. The cost of the wash bay is likely something that we would, you know, if, that may be something that we can fund through that capital project investment on an ongoing forward basis with the additional revenue from Lake Road Generating. That would be a great way to help get to that actual funding because that's 100% town-funded and that would be a bond issuance. That would be, you know, a pretty substantial cost impact because we have to build an entire building plus the wash bay system itself. We have been doing some minor, and I will call it minor, washing of vehicles inside our building. We actually have created, no, we've created a whole trap around it and we've created a, an interior, but it is not, it's detrimental to the interior of our building because you have a lot of moisture that you're entering into that building, right? So for the longevity of the building itself and overall for the fleet. I used to run a public bus company and I used to spec out, I specked out a wash bay. I used to watch what wash bays can and can't do for, for vehicles. It would be substantially better, not just for our highway fleet, but for our bus fleet, right? And it could be a potential revenue source. You could potentially look to, you know, add, depending on how much downtime availability you would have for that vehicle, for that bay, you would potentially be able to have other towns or, you know, other agencies be able to still utilize it and generate a small, not a huge amount of revenue, but a small amount of revenue to maybe offset a little bit of the operational costs, right? But it would be a great resource to have. So it is still on our capital improvement plan someday. It's been on the capital improvement plan since I got here in two thousand and nine, just saying. It'll get there. Economic development, there's no change on this. You're not seeing any, any change on the personnel line because that is a non-union position, and again, we handle all non-union positions. In July, all of those increases are built into the contingency budget at the end of this budget. You do that transfer in July when we handle that. But there's no changes to this budget. Highway supervision, you're seeing that decrease in clerical, so this is that shared position that we, she, she does so well, our shared, our shared person, she's an amazing, she's an amazing individual. She does really good. So this is managing that shared position. So we were able to provide some savings here, and then just kind of going through historical view, what do we really need and where will, really have we landed over the course of time on each of those individual line items? So that's provided a savings overall. Any questions? None. Engineering. Engineering is just contractual wage increases. So those are just based on union contracts. And then we do have a reduction to repair and maintenance supplies. Just basically looking at historical trends, some of the other, some of the other buildings have their own repair and maintenance that it gets charged to the, directly to the buildings, so it doesn't all have to hit here. And they do manage to do a fair amount of our capital projects. So we're able to bill that out to capital projects for materials as opposed to having to build that specific line item. It goes to like a low-set project. We are able to do it that way. The next one is central garage. Central garage wages is union contract increases. Under contractual services, the contractual services support, that's really to trust, try and bring it more closely in line to what we're actually seeing for spend, right? That's just the reality of what the actual contractual services expend is. We have some decreases in some other line items based on historical trends. We're able to move those. The clothing, we actually transitioned their uniform company to a new uniform company that provided us substantial savings. And I will say, the staff is much happier with this new uniform company as opposed to the previous one. And I've seen a lot of uniform, everybody usually loves them in the beginning and hates them about two years in, right?
But for now, we have a savings.
But for right now, we have a savings, right? So. But, so, so we were able to achieve a savings there. And then the repair and maintenance supplies, that is, I'm sorry, repair parts is the other increase. That is moving the parks. So parks, we had parts sitting out in the parks depart, parks department also had a parts line item. Say that five times fast. And what was happening is, is they weren't always necessarily remembering to charge out, like, the filter that went to parks, you know, the parks pickup truck over to the parks, right? It just, we've moved all of our fleet to this budget. They are the fleet managers. They manage and maintain the entire fleet, so we're just going to put all of our parts here. It makes more sense. So that's what you're seeing here. So you see a reduc, you'll see a reduction in the parks budget around that, but that's what that is. Highway maintenance. So highway maintenance, the first part of the labor is just contractual wage increase. The second one, overtime. So overtime, this is really to bring it to be more reflective of what we're seeing on an ongoing basis. We've been get, they've been getting a lot of calls out for wind events. So much more wind events than we were having, you know, five and ten years ago. And those, you know, typically, we would only, they would get called out for snow events, and it would go to the winter overtime budget. Anything that's not a snow event comes to this budget. There's a lot of wind events that we've been getting and down trees from wind events. So we need to recognize that increased usage of overtime because unfortunately, the wind likes to blow at night. And they get called out in the middle of the night or on Saturday and Sunday and all that. So that's what that increases for. The shift, the contractual services support increase of seven thousand is offset by the calcium decrease of forty-five hundred. So the calcium, we've, we've, we were outsourcing the application of calcium for our dirt roads. It's far more effective while we can do it in-house. It's not near, it's cumbersome, and it's not nearly as good of an application. It's far more effective for it to be outsourced and to be done in that manner. So part of that seven thousand is this forty-five hundred shift up. It's not costing us anymore. The other portion of that is just inflationary increases that they've had in other contractual services contracts. But that's, that's predominantly that shift. And then again, you're seeing the road renewal, you're seeing the same levels of our, of our road renewals year over year.
Maybe a comment there. They also do a lot of in-country services. They help out the sewer department.
They do.
With some mowing and whatnot.
They help out Board of Ed, too.
I was just going to get to that. Whatever things going on there. Also, they put out the voting signs, which.
They do.
I keep getting comments from the highway, why are we vowed with voting? But I said, we need someone to put the signs out, so they're the elected, you're the end of the list. You have vehicles, you can put the signs out. So they do some other things. They don't get credit for us, so I think we've got to give them a little credit for that.
Yeah, you know, I will say, I, I am always incredibly impressed with our highway department, with the amount of projects that they take on. And, you know, having, you know, some of, some of our staff is new to Killingley, and have, they've worked with, they've worked in other towns, and we bring them in, you know, some of our new staff, we bring into these capital project meetings, and they're used to having to go and find consultants or contractors or whatever. And I'm like, all right, Matt, can your team, like, can, like, the parking lot at Westfield Avenue, the gravel parking lot, and taking all the trees down and everything like that, highway can do all of that, right? That's, that's, saves the town a ton of money because we're not having to contract out for all of that. We have manpower that can do that. We have resources that can do that. We're only having to pay material. Obviously, we're paying wages, right? Clearly, we're paying wages, but they're on staff, but we're not having to pay for a contractor to come in and profit margins above that. They do phenomenal work. They put, they put in, you know, their drainage systems, their, you, they've, they can do an entire street. They, they can do everything on a road, which is not tip, you know, you don't typically see that. It's very hard to compare like our highway department to some of our other neighboring town highway departments because they're vastly different. Our highway department is really a construction crew and a tree crew. I mean, we can send out two full crews of tree crews, and they can go out and hit the town as full, solid tree crews. Most towns around us can't do that. They don't have those resources. We have great talent in our highway department. So thank you for giving them a shout out. They really deserve it.
Yeah, when I'm in there, I, you know, we always have the discussions, especially about the, when it comes around voting, that's I have to, you know.
Yep.
The other thing is, like, a lot of times when, when there's, you know, power's down and whatnot, the signage, they put signage out. The last time I got some grief was that they didn't put the signs out at the ends of the streets. People had to drive to the particular area. Well, when you have trees down and within, like you said, they're called out on overtime. Something's down at four o'clock in the morning. They're out there within an hour, closing off the roads where the incident is.
Yes.
We don't have enough time to go out and close the road off like on Upper Maple Street. I have people complaining to me that they had to drive all the way to the work area, that they should have put signs out at one-on-one and at Lake Road. Wait a minute. These guys are out in the middle of the night. They're doing what they have to do to keep in the road safe. And it's cleaned up within an hour. You know.
Yeah.
But, I mean.
They, they do their best judgment on where they can close.
They really do a lot.
Right. Winter maintenance, we have maintained the same level funding for winter maintenance. I will let you know that the winter maintenance reserve, we've still not had to utilize that. This year, we had, we had a wonderful winter this winter, right? It was wonderful. Our salt shed is fully stocked, and so, you know, there is, you know, possibility that, you know, if the council chose to, you know, make some reduction on the level of salt, that, you know, I think would be reasonable, given where we are within the winter and where we are within the reserves. I think that that, you know, could be something for discussion.
Maybe a comment on the, on the, the salt issue. I know last year with the state pier closing when they had salt down there, is there an increase in transportation to bring the salt to our salt shed? Is that, what are you seeing?
So we have had an, we did have an increase in salt costs, and I don't remember exactly what it was off the top of my head, but it wasn't substantial. And we've already put in our bid for consumption for next year. So I don't think that we're, we have any substantial impact on that for transportation.
But where we have to go to get it is.
We actually put in two.
Okay, that's just.
We cover ourselves. No, we don't stick with just one, because you never know when they're going to shut down the pier on you, right? And that did happen, and a lot of municipalities were stuck. But we were okay because we already had a contract with the other pier. And so we were able to get into the other pier and get our salt from the other pier, right? So we actually go off of both piers. So we do the New Haven pier, and we do the Providence pier. So we do both. And so we do reduced quantities out of both, so that way, number one, we're not overcommitting. We don't want to have to buy out a salt contract, especially if we have a really light winter. But also, we have a, we have a dual relationship. Providence is a lot close, is a lot, you know, it's a lot closer than the New Haven one. But we do try and keep relationship with both. Going into recreation, administration, and programs. So this budget has a couple of impacts on this one. Number one, he is projecting a higher revenue than what he is in the, in the current year. And that is largely in some expansion around summer camp. He wants to be able to increase summer camp slots, which would also provide some revenue. But also to do some, some additional programs that would generate those revenues. With regards to wages, two impacts, two major impacts through here. Number one, this is one of the departments that gets, gets hit with minimum wage. So we have automatically need to move up. A lot of those summer camp employees are minimum wage employees. Those will automatically have to jump, so we have the minimum wage impact on that. And then we have, we had some, we have some shift with regards to the technical. We had some shift within that staffing, and that's meeting current wage demands in that, in that space as well. So a couple of different impacts on that budget for those. The contractual services support, that is largely, that increase is last year, the last two years, they, they've really had a substant, they've had a difficulty getting referees for youth hoop. And so they're looking at potentially having to go back to contracting for referees again through the, the board certified program. And with two hundred games, that's a lot of games. I mean, you know, I never really thought about how many youth hoop games we have, but two hundred games is a lot of games that we need to, you know, have referees for. So that's part of that impact. The other part of that impact is partially offset by revenues because they're also looking at doing some additional field trips or modify, changes in field trips for summer camp to kind of make summer camp a little bit more attractive. So that's the, the secondary impact there.
Does the highway department get involved too much with, with rec, like with maintenance of parks, with, like, cat?
We work very closely with, so the recreation, the parks department and the highway department work very closely together on the, on the parks. I will say that when it comes to, they would, they, they come into play when parks needs assistance for, you know, like if there's trees that need to come down or, you know, major maintenance or overhauling that needs to get done, and they need the heavier equipment, that's usually when they bring highway in. Or if we're going to designate a large capital project. For instance, we were talking about putting up the pavilion and the splash pad. All of that, we were talking about doing with the town highway crew as opposed to, so the parks department doesn't necessarily do those. So, but they work in conjunction with each other, so everybody sits around the table.
We get highway credit with the recreation, that's why.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So we've got to kind of pass that.
We pull highway into everything.
Well, they have to get acknowledged for that, so.
I've got a question on that one, Mary. So just so I can get a picture of what this department looks like by looking at the spreadsheet. So you've got administrator, then you've got clerical on permanent and seasonal staff. Like, what does that staffing look like, technical?
So the seasonal staff is largely all of your, you, your summer camp employees, but also think just general programming staff, somebody that may come in and do yoga programs, or somebody that may come in and do lessons for something else. That's what, typically, that's what your seasonal staff is. Your technical staff is the assistant recreation director and the recreation supervisor, those two employees. That's all that's in those two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the clerical is actually reflecting two part-time clerical positions and a full-time clerical position. Yep. And then overtime has also been increased to be a bit more reflective of what they've been doing for overtime. We've been doing, managing a lot more of the events in, you know, on the day of the event with actual staff as opposed to volunteers. Sometimes the volunteers don't, don't come through on the day of the event, and so our staff is there. So we, we upped the overtime line for that. Any other questions on recreation? All right, we will move over to parks and grounds. Parks and grounds doesn't really have much for change, contractual wage change. The increase to the rental equipment and facilities is just around the porta-johns. We have to bring, we have added those down to the Westfield Avenue by the tennis courts, and the fees on those are increasing. So that's the increase around that. We've been able to kind of shift some of the landscaping operating supplies, that's just been a shift. But that's essentially parks and grounds. I'll say this in preparation for next year, because I didn't reflect it in this year's budget, but for next year, I would expect that I'm going to be, I'm going to be proposing an additional full-time staff person. So right now, we have two full-time staff members year-round in this budget, and we have two seasonal staff persons. Next, for the subsequent year's budget, we're really going to be looking at bringing on Westfield Avenue under our umbrella for maintenance, which means now we have a whole nother facility for grounds that needs to be kept up. We really should look at adding a, one of, an additional full-time position to manage all of that additional space as well. So I, I'll caveat that. I'll prep you for next year. It'll be in there. But for right now, because we're not adding that space at this point in time, we're, we're staying with where we're at, but know that, that's, that's right there at the, at the cusp.
Is there, is there anything, it was, I can't remember, there was discussion about doing something with the tennis courts, modifying a tennis court.
Yep. That's in the capital project. So we did, in the current fiscal year, we budgeted money to refresh the front courts to establish, and have them be pickleball courts for the front courts. And then in the, in this capital project, we also, this capital improvement plan, we have additional funds designated for renovating, because the back courts, you can't refresh those. Those need a full renovation. Those are half being swallowed by vegetation at this moment. So those are going to have to be fully renovated. So we have funds in to renovate the rear courts. That being said, it's possible that we decide to, once we get through that entire plan, to shift and make pickleball be the rear courts and the basketball be the front. to shift and make pickleball be the rear courts, and the basketball be the front courts, because the basketball courts would then be the more highly visible courts. And just giving demographics of the utilization, it makes sense to put those, they wouldn't be as competing, usually, the people that are playing, basketball also have music playing and stuff like that, the rear courts are like, right behind a residential home, the front courts are a little bit offset from that, so, it would just provide a little bit more buffer.
I have heard complaints recently about the noise that comes from pickleball courts as well.
Oh, good to know.
Being pretty substantial.
I haven't heard, I haven't heard that, I'll have to check that out. Good to know. So, we would have to look at buffering on that. If everybody's good, we'll go to public library.
Well, wait, the, the dog park, who, who is responsible for that?
Parks.
Okay.
Parks manages the dogs, dog park. The Whole River Trail, the Whole River Trail, the Dog Park, Owen Bell, Davis Park, Lions Park, Cat Hollow, I know I'm missing some.
I wouldn't mind, I wouldn't mind sometime, Mary, getting a little sheet with that, so we know.
I'll get your list.
Thank you.
Get your list. Plus, all of the exteriors of the town buildings.
So, with the River Trail expansion, so that's, that's...
That'll be them.
That'll be part of here, too.
That'll be part of here, too.
Okay.
Yes. Anything else on parks? Go to public library. Public library has had, yeah, this is another department's had some shift within staff over the past year, so we've had some movement there. While this position, this position, this department also is impacted by minimum wage with all of the other shifts that have occurred, we're able to kind of absorb that within all of these shifts that are occurring. Their contractual services support is, they, they had had an in-house IT individual, that person segued out, after doing an evaluation, we determined it was best for them to fall under the Novus network support. We also pulled them off of Bibliomation's network support, so Bibliomation is a statewide service, their circulation, book circulation is through them as well. But we found some critical holes in their network service, their, their backend patches that they were providing to the library, and so, with Novus taking that over, that's gonna be an additional 24,000. We believe that there will be some savings in Bibliomation, but we have not identified what those savings are as of yet, so I would expect next year that we'll be able to articulate better what those savings are, but we have just started to make that transition off of Bibliomation, and it's been a bit on the challenging side. So, this is reflecting Novus, so if you really wanted to understand what is that minimum wage impact to this budget, if you take that 17,000 and offset it by the 24, that increase there, that's really what your minimum wage impact is. Does that make sense? Any other questions there? Civic and cultural events is the same, there's no difference there, everything is the same. We'll move to the community center. Community center is, we're keeping this as, you know, minimal as we possibly can, given that we're looking at getting them transitioned over, so we're trying to follow closely the historical trends. Labor is their part-time custodian, and that is contractual wage increase. Any other questions there?
Is there any reduction in the community center, you know, people, are they still going there for the same amount?
Oh, absolutely. They're, actually, their programs are expanding, so, they're, they now have a weekly pickleball pickup game that occurs in the gymnasium, and that's garnering a fair amount of participation. The senior movies on Wednesday nights has, I think they were up to, Wednesday afternoons, they were up to 80 seniors that attended that last week, last week, the week before. So, they're back up to their normal levels of functioning, they have a lot of activity that's happening in that space.
So, what's with...
And when is the anticipated completion of the Westfield Avenue project?
Yeah, so, Westfield Avenue, 18 months. We're, we're really looking at 18 months, we're still in design, the permanent building commission has authorized the exterior envelope improvements, so, brick veneer repair, windows and roof, that will, that will complete the, that major exterior piece, so we're in the, we're in final design phases, to be able to then present what is the package for the interior renovations. I will say, we, you know, we are gonna prioritize what those really are gonna need to be in order to be able to stay within budget, but it, you know, it's been challenging on all sides of the fence, it's, you know, recreation is a very heavily and active program, and there's a lot of other active programs in that building going on at the same time, so, you know, there's, there's a lot of gives and takes around space right now. But we're getting there. And I, I'm just trying to be cognizant of time, and you tell me where you want me to stop, stop, I'm at other town buildings, I don't know if we can, I can keep going, you tell me when you're ready for me to stop, when do you want me to stop?
Uh, go another 10 minutes.
Okay. That's fine. So, other town buildings, we're remaining flat, and that is really the, managing the costs for the Bugbee Building, and we've been trending fine with those. Any questions on that one?
So, if all the HVAC and whatnot at the Bugbee Building is all taken care of?
Yeah, that's all, we've got the new, new system in there, and that's been working fine. Matt Saltzy goes over there periodically when they have to have an adjustment, but it's been working well. Any other questions on that one? If not, we'll go to building, safety and inspections, this is the building office, so building office and fire marshals on this one. And this is, so we have the personnel cost is, that increase is for, due to wage, contractual wage increases. The overtime, the increase that you're seeing there is largely to do, we've been getting, as you see in the current year, and even in the 21, 22 year, you're seeing that there is a lot more overtime, a lot more calls out for our deputy fire marshals, and our assistant building official has been getting called out as well, to manage some of the calls. Those would have to be on an overtime basis, so we are trying to reflect what that call volume is actually looking for, looking at, on those off-hour timeframes. The rest of this is just reflecting, so the current year, there's a decrease in knowledge and reference, because they bought, they, we had increased it in the current year because of new code books, they purchased the new code books, thankfully, they don't have another new set of code books coming out a year later, so we don't have to buy another new set of code books, that's the decrease.
So, you, you were talking about the off-hour callouts.
Yeah.
Who, who calls, how does that happen? What, what?
State police would potentially call them out.
Okay, that's...
So, if there's an impact to a structure, say a fire, and the building official has to deem it an unsafe structure, or a vehicle has crashed into the side of a building, and the, the state police will call out the, the available official to deem the, you know, what's going on, if there's a, you know, if there's a gas leak, or, you know, different things, we have to go through those steps, so they're called out on an emergency basis.
Right, that and the fire departments as well, we'll request the fire marshal or building inspector, or both.
Yep.
As needed, as well.
Yep.
I do have one question on that page, down under capital outlay, I saw that there was a, an equipment non-vehicular...
Yep.
Department requested 57,000, but you would cut that out, what was that?
So, they were looking for an additional truck, right now, the two, the deputy, one of the deputies is using his personal vehicle, the other deputy is using one of the smaller vehicles, what they were looking for is a truck, because as everyone is aware, with fire equipment and turnout gear, it should not be housed inside the cab, or inside the space of a vehicle in which you're operating in, it really should be in the bed of a truck, if you have to transport it, for health and safety reasons, so they were asking for a truck. What we did was, instead of having to purchase an additional truck, what we've done is, we've looked at our fleet, and we're able to shift around some of our fleet by purchasing one of the new pieces, one of the new vehicles that was authorized, we'll be able to turn over the building official's truck to the fire department, to the fire marshals, they'll then have a truck, they'll be able to have all their turnout gear in the truck, and the building official will then have an SUV-type vehicle, which he doesn't have turnout gear and that type of stuff, he can work appropriately out of a, out of an SUV-type vehicle. And it's just, how can we best maximize our fleet, without having to buy a bunch of different vehicles? So, that's what we did, was we prioritized the fleet and re-shifted who's driving what. And so, we're hoping that we'll be able to make that shift complete, once we're able to actually purchase vehicles, right now, the state bid, the state list is locked, you can't, you can't get on, you can't purchase a vehicle right now off the state bid list, that program is still locked. Matt's been calling, I think, every two weeks to say, can I get a vehicle, can I, you know, we have a list of vehicles that he needs to effectuate procurement on, so he's working on those, but that's what we're doing with this, so instead of having to purchase this vehicle here, we had other vehicles that were gonna be coming off of that frontline status, that can go, the deputy fire marshal is part-time, and move it into a lower utilization.
So, what about like, 11 Maple Street, and we still have to go out there and check the integrity of that fence, and like, Ty Basil, and those type of things?
They drive by it, yep.
You know, because it's, it's out there, which they should be taking care of, I mean, these things are hanging on so long, but, I mean, and it does affect time, that these guys could be doing something else.
It does.
That's the point that I'm trying to make.
And I will say, so, yes, they drive by it, but also, you know, our highway department drives by it, too, and other staff drives by it, our zoning enforcement officer drives by the, drives by them as well, and so, as any of us, as town employees, if we see something awry with the property, we know who to get a hold of, we immediately go down there and say, hey, you need to go out and check Ty Basil's fence, because it looks like a section is blown over, right? And they immediately take action, so, they don't always necessarily have to go out themselves, our, our collective staff takes it upon ourselves to always be looking at these properties, to just be helpful.
You know, like, on Ty Basil, town is still paying for the fence, but we're getting reimbursed for the Ty Basil.
We are. Correct, they've been paying for it.
But, again, how can we push these along, I mean, both of them, 11 Maple Street's been a nightmare, I don't know how bad Ty Basil is, but I mean, if, if we have to still be cognizant of that.
11 Maple Street is coming to fruition.
Well, like, that was in the court.
Finally, that one's coming to fruition.
Yes.
And, you know, we continue to push on the owners of the other properties, to try and get them moved forward and, and fully cleaned up and abated, so, it does unfortunately take time. Sometimes, property owners are fast, like, the one at the end of Maple, the one at the end of Main Street, when that fire occurred, that property was cleaned up really in short order, sometimes that is the case, other times, you run into litigation or legal issues that slow that process.
I mean, it does, our people still have to be involved with that, it's like, yeah, no.
They do, and we have to continue to monitor it, and all of that. Do you want me to quickly do animal control, and then we'll be done, right? Okay, animal control, this is the value that was sent to us by NICOG, it's their per capita fee, it is increased due to the increased cost of veterinary care and feed for the animals, which veterinary care has increased pretty substantially over the last two years. And typically, I will say, that this program has, you know, rate, remained, if you can see in the previous years, relatively flat, this is really the first of any real substantial increase to this program in quite some time. And with that, I will put a marker on law enforcement, and that's where we're gonna pick up on Monday. So close.
Thank you.
Jason, just real quick, a generalized comment for a lot of what you've already said, you know, I, I can appreciate the fact that you're having to up everything due to market increases and things like that, to bring your staff to the median, you know, I think of what I go through with my line of work there, and we're doing the same thing, what I was paid 10 years ago to start is now $10 more an hour, so I can definitely have an appreciation for that, and understanding of why you're doing what you're doing, so...
I, I thank you, and I appreciate you, I appreciate that comment, it has definitely been a struggle and a challenge, I think I've lost a lot of sleep over that one this past year, just because it is really hard, and it's hard to balance with all the staff that's been here for years, you know, when you have staff that's been here for 30 and 40 years, there's no way they're ever keeping pace with that market, and it's, it becomes an inequity, and how do you, how do you address that inequity? So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to take a 10-minute recess.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Mr. Wood, discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are going into recess for 10 minutes, and we will return at 10 a.m.